Okay, everybody, I have 6:58 now, 6:59, excuse me. Right at seven o'clock, I'm going to hit the start broadcast. You will hear a recorded voice saying the broadcast is now in session. All attendees are in listen-only mode. And Vice Chair McConnell, that will be your cue to go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Okay.
Just to confirm, we do not have Ms. Torres?
Not as of yet. Dave, should Paul Sorini, S A U R I N I, be moved over?
He's the property owner.
Is that it? Yes.
I didn't think he wanted to speak, but I suppose.
Okay. Okay, it is seven o'clock. Here we go.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everyone. This is Joe McConnell. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Jennifer, roll call.
Thank you, Vice Chair McConnell. Vice Chair McConnell?
Present.
Vice Chair McConnell is present. Commissioner Carpenter?
Present.
Commissioner Carpenter is present. Commissioner calling?
Present.
Commissioner calling is present. Commissioner Dunn, excuse me, Commissioner Tomacek?
Present.
Commissioner Tomacek is present. Commissioner Mayo?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayo is present. And Commissioner Zhang?
Present.
Commissioner Zhang is present. Commissioner Dunn?
Excused.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunn is excused absent. And Commissioner Torres?
Should we say excuse?
Yes, thank you. Roll call is complete.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Given the absence of Commissioner Dunn and Commissioner Boshier, tonight, Commissioner Zhang, you will be voting. And if Commissioner Torres joins us later, she will be voting as well. Next item on the agenda is consideration minutes from the preceding meeting of July 13th. Do I have a motion from the commissioners to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner calling. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomacek. Minutes of the previous meeting have been approved. Well, wait, no, they have not. They have not been approved. We need a roll call vote to approve the minutes. Jennifer, please proceed.
Thank you, Vice Chair McConnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner calling?
Yes.
Commissioner calling is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek?
Aye.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo?
I was not there.
Thank you. Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Roll call vote is complete.
Thank you, and the minutes from July 13th are approved. Before we move to the next item on the agenda, want to let everyone know that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, any comments that were submitted were accepted electronically and via voicemail and were delivered to the Planning Commission and posted to the Public Agenda Packet online prior to the meeting. Anyone wishing to give comments and that have signed up in advance for the online guidelines will be called upon in order to speak during the live meeting, but Jennifer, I do not believe that we have anyone, do we?
That is correct, Vice Chair McConnell. There's been no one signed up to speak live during the meeting and no request for voicemails to be played.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
Excuse me, I didn't sign up, but I wasn't aware that we had to sign up, but I would like to make some brief comments when the opportunity is there, if it's okay.
See, whose voice did I just hear?
My name is Paul Sorini. I'm the son of the property owner where the proposed Dogtopia would be located.
Okay, yeah, Paul, I think that when we get to, when we get into the applicant's presentation, Jennifer, that would be about the appropriate time for Paul to speak, wouldn't it?
That is correct. Paul, once your applicant team has finished their presentation and Vice Chair McConnell asks for questions, that, or asks for conversation, that would be a good time for you to make your statement.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, next up on the agenda, public hearing and action on use by special permit for animal daycare, outdoor and kennel for a dog daycare and kennel service to be known as Dogtopia. Mr. Gurman, it's all yours.
Thank you, Vice Chair McConnell. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Gurman. I am a senior planner with the city's planning division. It is my pleasure to welcome you to this public hearing of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we will be discussing an application for a special use permit for Dogtopia and animal daycare and kennel for dogs. I'm so used to saying, "Next slide, please." I have to do it myself this time. As part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, and the public notices mailed, posted and published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. Here is a vicinity map showing the location of Brent Cross Shops, which is where the applicants would like to locate the new Dogtopia facility. The red star shows the approximate location within the building that Dogtopia would occupy. Here, we see a close-up of the Brent Cross Shops commercial site. The tenant spaces shaded in gray would be where Dogtopia would be located. The yellow highlighted area at the back or east side of the building is where Dogtopia plans to locate a fenced outdoor play area about 700 square feet in size. This play area, enclosed with an eight-foot-tall vinyl fence, would be the only exterior change made to the site. Dogtopia provides daycare and kenneling services for dog owners. Representatives of the company are with us this evening, and they will provide details of the offerings and benefits of the Dogtopia operation at a later time. Under the City of Westminster's code, an animal daycare, either with or without an outdoor component and a kennel service, may both be permitted with a use by special permit, also known as a special use permit, or SUP for short. You may view the definitions for animal daycare, outdoor and kennel here. It is critical to understand that by granting approval of the SUP, the Planning Commission grants the allowance for this land use only to the current business owner for the Dogtopia facility at this specific location. The allowance, once granted, does not run with the land in perpetuity, may not be transferred to others, and expires if abandoned for a year or more. When the city planning staff evaluates an SUP application, nine criteria are considered. The first four of these criteria are shown on this slide. Staff found that the use proposed with this application would be well-suited to the area proposed for it, be similar to like operations at other locations around the city, and represent a minimum of outdoor activity, which would be located away from high-traffic public areas. The two largest concerns, odor and noise, would be well mitigated, should be well mitigated, excuse me, with the proposed approach of the operation. The final five criteria are displayed here. Staff found that the model for operation of Dogtopia would be in keeping with the existing surrounding uses, with no outdoor storage and with deliveries and waste disposal handled at the rear of the site away from high-traffic public areas. The site has adequate parking, is not expected to generate high-traffic demands, and should not pose any undue hazards for visiting pedestrians. In addition to the nine approval criteria you just saw, there are five standards that must be considered when reviewing an SUP application, the first three of which are shown here. Staff finds that the proposed Dogtopia will be reasonably compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and that it is not in conflict with any of the policies of a comprehensive plan. There are five spacing standards that apply to, only to other types of land uses that may be permitted with SUPs. None of these apply to the animal daycare, outdoor or kennel categories. So essentially, item number three doesn't apply. The final two standards are shown on this table. As number three before it, neither of these standards apply to the Dogtopia SUP application. Staff recommends the holding of tonight's public hearing and granting of conditional approval of this SUP by the Planning Commission. There are two detailed conditions that have to do with noise mitigation, with a noise mitigation measure to be evoked only if needed, and that the applicant meet the state licensing requirement for this type of operation. Approval of the proposed SUP helps to cultivate a thriving, inclusive and engaged community through access to opportunity and a resilient and diverse economy by providing new economic opportunities and by bringing new services to the community. The goal to provide visionary, effective and collaborative government is met by approving the proposed SUP, which meets the Westminster Municipal Code and other applicable requirements. Now, we will hear from our applicant, represented by Cassidy Burns, the franchisee for this Dogtopia location. Also attending in support of this application are Tracy Cross, the new franchisee support director, Lisa Cabot, Director of Design, and Kathy Halter, Vice President of Development. All three of these ladies are with Dogtopia. At the conclusion of the applicant presentation, staff and the applicant will be available to answer any questions. Ms. Burns, please feel free to begin when you're ready, and I will advance the slide on your cue.
Okay, thank you. So, for some background information, my dad will be a co-franchisee. He is not here right now, but he has been in the franchisee business for over 20 years. And I graduated from Colorado State University last May, but I am currently working at the Dogtopia of Denver Tech Center to get extra experience. So when our doors open, I will be fully trained and ready to go. Next slide, please. So for our hours of operation, we are open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and then Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 to 5:00. We typically have five to six employees during each shift, and our services include canine socialization and open-play environment for daycare and overnight boarding, spa services, including baths, nail trims, ear cleaning and teeth brushing, and then some training opportunities with a local certified trainer. And we have a strict policy of a minimum of 30 square feet per dog to ensure the safety of each dog in the open-play environment, as well as a 15-to-1 ratio, meaning every 15 dogs require at least one employee to be in the room during open-play. And then, next slide, please. So we are a good neighbor. We've had no issues in over 150 locations for over 15 years. We also support local businesses. We bring new customers into the retail corridor. We create jobs, and we are family-owned and operated business, and we promote better canine citizens. Next slide, please. So you can see on our left, these are all of our certifications on how we build our community trust. And these factors create the high level of trust that we have with our pet parents, what they can come to expect from us. And then, our peace of mind is a big part of our community trust. We have webcams that are available from 7:00 to 7:00 during that Monday through Friday, and then 8:00 to 5:00 on the weekends as well. We use completely pet-safe cleaning products, which I will talk more about in a later slide. And we have experts in canine behavior and help to address any questions we may have. And then, we have a very extensive process for our odor and waste management, as well as our noise control. We have a fresh, modern design and an operational support team that is ready to help. Next slide, please. So our 10 commitments to safety are listed here. At Dogtopia, safety is our number-one priority always. We have our certified canine coaches. Each canine coach training has been independently approved by both the International Association of Animal Behavior Consultants and the Certification Council for Professional Dog Trainers. We have safety experts who are support office employees, and that includes an environmental biologist, a veterinary scientist and a canine behavioralist. And then, we have a very extensive evaluation process for each dog that comes in. We call it our meet-and-reap process, and that includes a verification of our vaccinations, that they are up to date, that we require, the review of the health and history of the dog, a nose-to-tail assessment, and then an evaluation inside the open-play environment with other dogs of the same size and temperament. And then, we use our homestyle crepes and a rubberized flooring in our open playrooms. As I mentioned, we use only dog-safe cleaning products, and we have developed a cleaning program that utilizes only pet-safe spot cleaners that can be used during open-play. And then additionally, our playrooms are also sanitized twice daily, from top to the bottom. And then, we have our climate-controlled HVAC system, so we keep all of our dogs at the perfect temperature during playtime, naptime, and throughout the day. It also helps to keep the air fresh and clean. And then, as mentioned, we do have those webcams in every playroom. You can watch your dog play from any time we are open, 7:00 to 7:00, and then 8:00 to 5:00, except for our 12:00 to 2:00 naptime. And then, we also have our village of knowledge across all of our locations. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this is our commercial security system. Every Dogtopia is equipped with monitored security systems that instantly alert owners and managers in any event of an emergency. We have sensors for smoke, motion and sound, so we always know that our dogs and our staff are completely safe with 24-hour monitoring with these systems. Next slide, please. And then, for our outdoor environment in odor control, we use a spot cleaning protocol. So our design team ensures proper drainage to allow for regular and efficient cleaning of our outdoor environment. And then, our artificial grass is cleaned very similarly to our interior floors. Like I mentioned, we use that spot cleaning protocol, and then an end-of-the-day cleaning protocol, as well as a turf cleaning machine. And it's used with bioenzymatic cleaner for odor control, and then it effectively extracts all waste from that outdoor area. Then, if you want to go to the next slide. And then, just our odor control inside the building is used. We understand that the odor control begins at the source of the odor. So we are dedicated to removing the source of the odor immediately and thoroughly with our protocols, like I mentioned. We use professional backpack vacuums and auto scrubbers to wash and recover all organic debris from the flooring. And then, our UV lights have been proven to effectively deactivate airborne pathogens, preventing the growth of mold or mildew. And we actually pride ourselves in being the first dog daycare in the dog daycare business to address the need to clean using certified safe cleaning chemicals while at the same time effectively killing any contagious germs in the building. And then, lastly, I've just included some photos of what a Dogtopia would look like from the inside. So this is actually the Dogtopia I work at now. This is the outside of the Dogtopia of Denver Tech Center. And then, if you want to go to the next slide, this is a model of what the inside of a Dogtopia would look like. We have those three different playrooms, our lobby, our spa. And then, if you want to go to the next slide, this is an actual photo of the inside of one. Like I mentioned, those homestyle crepes along the wall there, and then our rubberized flooring. And then, each one has those murals, and then our UV lights as well. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much, Cassidy, and nicely done. Vice Chair McConnell, we have completed our presentations for you, and we are available to answer any questions that you or the other commissioners may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gurman. Do we have any comments or questions from any of the commissioners?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you. Now, this is a question for Mr. Gurman regarding the conditional approval regarding the sound. The potential noise complaints would kick in, updating the fence from a vinyl fence to a to a brick fence, masonry fence. What, what, what actually triggers that? Because this seems to be a commercial area, and what would, what would actually trigger that? And how would we know that it's an actual, that the complaint is actually justified versus versus just somebody being a nuisance, filing a nuisance complaint? What's, what's the procedure there?
That's a very good question. Typically, what we do is we, the complaints would come into our code enforcement division, and they would really be monitoring for more of a trend rather than a, you know, kind of a one-off. So if, for example, someone was trying to play a prank, or, you know, maybe just had a disagreement with Dogtopia, and they, you know, wanted to cause trouble, that would be an obvious example of maybe someone who's not really complaining about the noise, but just wants to, you know, create an issue. So what our code enforcement folks are trained to do in that scenario is to look for trends, which means repeated complaints by more than one source, different times of day, things of that nature, so that we can actually see, hey, we might have a problem out there. And then, the other thing that might happen, if deemed necessary, would be we could also go out and observe for ourselves to see if we're, you know, seeing problems.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments at this time? Going once, going twice. All right. At this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and open the public testimony, the public hearing portion of our meeting this evening. And as a reminder to anyone, we have not received any emails or voicemails from, from the public at this point in time, nor do we have anyone that has signed up to be on the list. However, Mr. Sorini, I believe that you had stated earlier in the meeting you wanted, wanted some time to speak to us.
Yes, please.
Please go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I can keep it very brief. Just to reiterate, I'm the son of the property owner at the Brent Cross Center, and I'm here representing his interests tonight. We, when we were first presented with this tenant opportunity, we went down to the location in the tech center, the Dogtopia, where Cassidy coincidentally works, because we wanted to see what the facilities were like. And we were very impressed with the level of professionalism. They were very sanitary, and so we were very pleased on that level. And just to reiterate some of the concerns of the city, my dad doesn't want to just rent to any tenant that comes down the pike. So we had concerns about odor and noise also. And in our investigation, talking more to Dogtopia and the tenants who want to open up there and neighboring tenants to the, to the location down in the tech center, we didn't run into any red flags. We're always concerned about our tenants working well together and having synergy with one another. So we didn't, we weren't enormously alarmed. We were very pleased with how they have plans for sound mitigation. And I've, we've all found the location in the tech center to be very sanitary. It didn't have a nasty smell or anything. It looked as good as it does in this picture here. They, they keep it in tip-top shape. We think this would be a great business for Westminster into the long-term future. It would attract more customers to our center, and we like to be fundamentally law-abiding and get along with the city. And we want to work diligently with the city to cooperate to get this tenant in here. We like, we like the, we like that they're credible people. They seem to be upstanding citizens, and that's pretty much all I want to say is we have, we wouldn't have entertained them as a tenant if we had any objections to them. And so, that's pretty much all I want to say, and I want to say thank you for letting me add that in for your consideration.
Yeah, you're welcome, Mr. Sorini, and thank you for your comments. We don't, I don't believe we have anyone else to make any public comment at this point in time, so I wanted to go ahead and close the public hearing and then offer staff, if they have any additional comments they would like to offer at this time, Mr. Gurman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sorini brought up a very valid point, and this goes back to the previous question that we received regarding what if there's a noise complaint. He mentioned neighboring tenants, and of course, we would, we would weigh that very heavily and very carefully if a complaint came from a neighboring tenant. In our, in our judgment, we believe that Dogtopia takes a great deal of effort into preparing their tenant finishes to mitigate noise. So we don't think there's going to be a problem there, but we would take that kind of a complaint very seriously.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gurman. Commissioners, any questions for staff or applicant at this point in time?
And just to reiterate some of the concerns of the city, my dad doesn't want to just rent to any tenant that comes down the pike. So we had concerns about odor and noise also. And in our investigation, talking more to Dogtopia and the tenants who want to open up there, and neighboring tenants to the, to the location down in the tech center, we didn't run into any red flags. We're always concerned about our tenants working well together and having synergy with one another. So we didn't, we weren't enormously alarmed. We were very pleased with how they have plans for sound mitigation. And I've, we've all found the location in the tech center to be very sanitary. It didn't have a nasty smell or anything. It looked as good as it does in this picture here. They, they keep it in tip-top shape. We think this would be a great business for Westminster into the long-term future. It would attract more customers to our center, and we like to be fundamentally law-abiding and get along with the city. And we want to work diligently with the city to cooperate to get this tenant in here. We like, we like the, we like that they're credible people. They seem to be upstanding citizens. And that's pretty much all I want to say is we have, we wouldn't have entertained them as a tenant if we had any objections to them. And so that's pretty much all I want to say. And I want to say thank you for letting me add that in for your consideration.
Yeah, you're welcome, Mr. Serini, and thank you for your comments. We don't, I don't believe we have anyone else to make any public comment at this point in time, so I wanted to go ahead and close the public hearing and then offer staff, if they have any additional comments they would like to offer at this time, Mr. Gurman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Serini brought up a very valid point, and this goes back to the previous question that we received regarding what if there's a noise complaint. He mentioned neighboring tenants, and of course, we would, we would weigh that very heavily and very carefully if a complaint came from a neighboring tenant. In our, in our judgment, we believe that Dogtopia takes a great deal of effort into preparing their tenant finishes to mitigate noise. So we don't think there's going to be a problem there, but we would take that kind of a complaint very seriously.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gurman. Commissioners, any questions for staff or applicant at this point in time? Okay, Ms. Halter.
I just thought that I'd add one more comment for you all on the sound and kind of safekeeping for Cassidy, as well as for the city as you hopefully grant her permission to open her store here. We do have external video cameras. We have webcams in all of our playrooms, and the outdoor play is one of those. So that becomes a resource oftentimes when we have concerns about, from commissioners regarding noise, that can, can help folks to know that we retain those for two weeks. And so if there's a complaint, you can come and actually see what might have been going on in that playroom at that time. So it's just nice to know.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see or anything in the text box, or commissioners don't have any more comments or questions. So at this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and call for a motion and a second on the item. And before we do, please pay attention to the motion as written and in bold, underlined parentheses text that says, "Please read the entire text." Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move, I move that the Planning Commission conditionally approve a special use permit for an animal daycare, outdoor and a kennel for Dogtopia to operate at Brent Cross Shops subdivision, subject to the rules and requirements of Section 11-4-8 of the Westminster Municipal Code, all other applicable city codes and regulations, and the additional conditions related to the outdoor play area and the state license requirement recommended in the staff agenda memo as follows. A. If the city receives complaints due to noise emanating from the outdoor play area, the business owner shall, within 90 days of notice from, by the city, replace the proposed vinyl enclosure fencing with an eight-foot masonry wall enclosure to better control noise. This masonry wall shall have brick cladding to match the exterior of the existing Brent Cross Shops building and an opaque black metal gate for egress. Continued noise complaints received after this corrective measure is taken may be grounds for reconsideration of the special use permit by the Planning Commission. And B. The applicant obtains the needed state license to operate and occupy their animal daycare and kennel facility. This permit is obtained through the Department of Agriculture, see Pet Animal Care Facilities Act. Pursuant to Section 11-4-8L of the Westminster Municipal Code, no approval for a business license or a building permit shall be issued until the special use has been approved by the city and the appropriate state license has been issued and evidence thereof has been provided to the planning manager. End of motion.
Vice Chair McConnell, I believe you're muted, sir?
Yeah, we guys couldn't read my lips. Apparently not. Right, anyway, thank you, Commissioner Carpenter, for the motion. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Zhang. Are there any other comments or questions from the commission at this point in time? Commissioner Calling.
Thank you. I do support this motion. I just want to vocalize that I think that this looks like a great special use permit for this location, and I think it'll be a great addition to the city and to that corner. So I wish you the best of luck with your new venture if this passes, and I look forward to having that land use at that corner. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Calling. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I, Jennifer, if we could, please go ahead and have the roll call vote.
Thank you. Vice Chair McConnell.
Yay.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter.
Yay.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Calling.
Yay.
Commissioner Calling is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek.
Yay.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo.
Yay.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Commissioner Zhang.
Yay.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Vote is complete.
Remember, Vice Chair McConnell, I've got some improvements. Okay, the motion has passed unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance this evening, and thank you to the Dogtopia folks for a very informative presentation.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good evening.
Okay. All right. Last but not least, do we have any discussion of old business? Jennifer, I think I did see an email earlier today stating that the August 10th meeting had, will not be held.
Correct. We do not have any agenda items for August 10th.
Okay. Does anyone else have any miscellaneous business they would like to discuss at this point in time? All right, thank you, everyone. With that, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you all for spending the time with us tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.